Do something on a local level for an incentive package to add on to what county and the state's doing. We also encourage you to, when you talk to your businesses, if they have any questions about they want to become part of the program, it's real easy for them to do. All they have to kind of do is contact me on the back or go to the state website and sign up. Once they sign up, they'll start getting applications that kind of get within their, within their market. And, and since we are a home state, home base Iowa county, and we wanted to celebrate it by letting you guys have a home base Iowa community signage. Cause you guys too are a home based Iowa community now.
Okay, we'll find a home for that, a home. I'd love you to go to Altorfer and the two auto dealers, if you haven't already.
Yeah, once we, now that we got the package together, I'm gonna go take another loop around everybody and then say, okay, this is another reason. The first round was just, we had to get X amount of employers to agree to do it before we got designation. So yeah, we're gonna try to.
So we could pull together some sort of incentive from the city.
You're already doing some things and if you want to do something in addition to like tax payment or the free hookups and things like that, that you, I know that you have.
For new residents only, correct?
Veterans.
Pardon?
Veterans are, I assume retire, retirees.
Yep, that, they qualify too. And as part of the, part of this process is also encourage them to go to our, uh, county, the county level too, so they know whatever.
I'm not sure she's really sure.
So she'll, she'll have a database that'll actually have a lot of those that are coming back and, you know, the, the nice thing is we're kind of hitting it from different angles on this. So, you know, we can probably channel some people into the program. I'd love it if we spent it all every year. Kind of the history of the other counties that have done it, it, you know, it doesn't usually get to that level, but I'd love it if we could do that. We're kind of a bedroom community, bedroom county anyway. But if, if, you know, if we can get those that are gonna come here and get into work here too, that'd be great. What of any other cities? Have they got any commitments from other cities incentives?
Yeah, there's, um, oh, as far as the, the other cities, they haven't actually voted on anything yet, but they did talk during the meeting, some of the things that we mentioned.
Not sure we would, well, I don't know, tax abeyments getting kind of pricey.
We have, we have property tax for a year.
Yeah, that, that's up to you folks.
And like you said, it could be as well limited as going to your local businesses, downtown businesses.
Downtown dollars and a couple hundred dollars.
Something like that, just to help them into the community in addition to them starting a new job and starting a new community.
Yeah.
Something like that is as good as.
Okay. If you have questions about the program, don't hesitate to talk to Roger or myself. All right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks a lot. Good night.
Thanks guys.
I gotta do them in 50 feet.
Give 2,500 bucks.
2,500 bucks.
I'm already a resident. No, you're not.
Now that Cedar County. Of West Branch. Of West Branch.
This is Cedar County Road.
Cedar County.
I know. I don't care. We'll get you, we'll get you a free haircut, Tom.
I know.
Get you a free haircut.
I already, I already free.
All right. Public comment, item E is public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council, do so now, please. We've been listening to you, but we cannot act on any thing. Anyone out there in Zoom land? Hearing none, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda, which includes the city council minute, meeting minutes of April, April 19th. Why wouldn't it be May, last meeting in May?
Should be May 3rd.
May 3rd. People meeting minutes of May 3rd. A Class C liquor license with outdoor service and Sunday sales privileges for Cedar's Edge Golf Course. In the claims report, give me a motion, someone.
Someone.
Nick will second. Any discussion?
Do we need to make a amendment?
About the date?
Yeah.
Do we need to? I'm seeing what the actual agenda is.
April 19th, but the minutes in the packet is.
The actual agenda in the packet is May 3rd.
Good.
Yeah.
A door repair with Loughlin.
What repair? Door repair.
Door and repair.
Oh, that was.
Yeah, that includes an air conditioning system.
That was, well, just the way our billing system sets it up.
Just give me a hard time.
Actually, I wish I would have had another 500, cause didn't make as much per hour. That includes a little brick building repair too, at 16,000.
What?
That check payment to Loughlin Design.
Yeah.
It's everything. It's the whole, it's everything.
It's got some of the.
Okay, any other comments? Hearing none, although.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. We'll enter into a public hearing to discuss the status of funded activities and final statement for the West Branch Food Pantry CDBG Grant Project. Is there anyone here to address the council publicly on the status of the CDBG grant? Zoom land or at live?
I think we have.
Roger.
Barb? You go ahead.
I see you.
I just want to thank the council and, and Mr. Redmond Jones for the work that you've done to make that money available. It's really, will make a difference for a lot of students and we appreciate it.
Thank you. I see Mark Queen of Scouter Good is here. Thanks for listening in, Mark.
Yeah, it's good to be here and thank you for including us in the grant. So thanks Redmond for that. And if you just want a little background on what we did, when students left last spring, you know, we had a lot of food in the ground and then the high tunnel ready to go. And nobody left to eat it. So I just scurried around and put together an email mailing list that I generated on Facebook of people in the area to sort of select through a Google form, what foods they'd wanted. And, and then it was all just suggested prices. There wasn't like any hard and fast pricing. And so we just had a bucket and then people kind of paid what they felt like they could pay. And so I don't really have any tracking paperwork of like, you know, how many people were served who, you know, were food insecure? And, and how much money went towards them. But, but I knew, do know that we were reaching quite a few food insecure people. And, and I feel like we did good work with them and we could continue to do some of that this summer as well and this fall. Cause, um, cause we're in a good position to outproduce our needs at this, at this point.
All right. Well, thank you, Mark and Scouter Good for growing such healthy gardens.
Yep, it's my pleasure.
Um, anyone else?
Our head of school, John Zimmerman is here, Roger, if you want.
I haven't met you yet, so go ahead.
Hi friends, I just wanted to echo Mark's sentiments and thank you very much for including us in this. I moved to West Branch last July. I have not been able to get out in the community as much with the current situation. I look forward to meeting you all and hopefully welcome you onto our campus in the near future. If you haven't heard, we've recently opened a middle school program and we've been here all year with 42 students. So anyway, I just wanted to come and introduce myself and say thank you and I look forward to meeting you all in person in the future.
Thank you. Mark is the new director in Scouter Good.
Oh no, John is the director. Mark is just the farmer. Get that right, Roger.
John's the farmer, Mark is the.
I don't think either one of us would do.
Each other's job. Okay, thank you guys. Um, anyone else for the public hearing portion? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. And move on to Resolution 2005, approving and accepting the status of funded activities and the final statement for the Food Pantry's CDBG Grant Project. I need a motion on Resolution 2005. Nick? Jody will second. Does this close out then?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, the way it's presented up there is how we spent the money. Good chunk of it went to the food pantries, our West Branch Food Pantry. And also the schools have food pantry. So the middle school, the high school and the backpack program. All are food pantries that focus in on various different populations there. So, um, so at this point, we already have all of our receipts submitted and all that's in now. All they're waiting to have is the minutes from this meeting. We'll be able to close it out. I gotta go take some snap pictures of our ADA work that we did in our food pantry. So now that, I think if you remember, we had the little step coming out in the sidewalk and that was problematic and folks that had accidents there. So now we have access to the back. So it's, it's pretty even. We can bring folks without having to maneuver steps or anything like that. And, and now it's even a little bit more comfortable in there, cause we didn't have any windows in there. Didn't have any air conditioning. Now we have some air conditioning in there. Helps with the preserving of food as well as a little more comfortable for the volunteers that work in there. So those things are all, all together and we just need to take some pictures and we'll be able to have it closed out before the end of the year, in the fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. So any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote Leslie to approve for, uh, Resolution 2005.
Councilperson Goodweiler?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Okay, now we have a public hearing again to amend the budget by the same amount, seven to 25,000.
We had not budgeted the expenditure.
Okay, so is anyone here Zoom or live to speak to the, amending the budget to cover our spending of the food pantry project? Hearing none, close the public hearing and move on to Resolution 2006. Actually amending the current budget for the current fiscal year ending June 30th. Give me a motion, someone. Nick? Jody will second. Um, any comments? Okay, go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Goodweiler?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
All right. Item five is an ordinance. Ordinance, first reading of ordinance 781. Amending chapter 165 zoning regulations to add a section 51 called Anexed Territory. I guess I need a motion, someone.
Someone.
Colton? So maybe one, Nick will second. So, um, Redmond discovered we really don't have an annexation policy. Thus, creating this policy, correct?
Yep. So this is basically provide some process so that our planning and zoning can be a part of of what that zoning designation, any proposed annexation before it's actually annexed. This particular piece is really from the Tiffin model. Uh, it basically just provides that opportunity for the planning zoning to be involved and then the council be involved. And then the state process will kick in. So the state process is still the state process, which would be reviewed by the Iowa City Development Board on any annexations that happen. That's still happening. We're just taking a part of zoning, what that land will be zoned as before the annexation actually goes through the state process. That's all that's due.
Okay, so that, so the state process doesn't have that requirement of coming up with an actual zone that would come in?
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't do that.
Comes in automatically as ag if we don't designate a zone, I believe, or used to.
Now that.
I don't know. You don't have, you never had to deal with that in Corv, go ahead.
Ours come in our one in Corv.
Okay. Okay, I, I guess this is a fine idea. Don't.
Oh, it was also one of the things that we talked about in our previous post. Not our, not our last one, the one before that.
Any discussion? I guess this is a good thing to have on our books. Someone can look at it and know what to do. There's other details that have to be, the cloud of the state codes such as notification and, and all that.
Yeah, when you do the annexation, there's played out a, depending on, if you're doing all voluntary or 80, 20.
We're asking our planning and zoning commission to be part of this process. Have we asked them to be part of this process? We showed them this.
No. I think that's kind of important.
I mean, it's kind of run of the mill stuff, but we ought to at least share with them our ideas and, you know, maybe they have some better ones. I mean, we have three readings, so they've got a time to change.
Yes, we either pass this tonight or table it. If you pass it tonight, it could be, they can still have their input.
Yeah.
They can still have their input. I guess that's what I would suggest. Leslie, once the next planning is on.
Next, next Tuesday?
That's coming, yeah.
The agenda will go out Thursday, so I can have the.
Perfect.
Okay, so we'll, we'll give it to them on their meeting, but we can do what we want with it tonight. Any other discussion? I guess I'm in support of this. Go ahead, Leslie, let's vote.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. All right, town hall rates. Had a decent discussion about this last time. Kick it back to Melissa. She's giving it back to us.
So, I can speak on it? Okay, so I included here, I think I heard everything you said. Included here the rates that we had discussed that currently are in place, the ones that we talked about on May 3rd and then the, the latest changes. We added a nonprofit out of town rate, decreased the rates so that they're comparable with what they are now. And getting rid of the COVID cleaning fee. So things like dance aren't gonna see any substantial changes. The youth nonprofits can still use it. They get 10 free times or something like that, which they can always petition for more too. Anyway, I think I heard everything you said, but take a look and see what you think.
I, I keep looking at that $2.50 additional hour and just.
It, it's ridiculous. It's a small, it, it's a very small amount and I struggled, I struggled a lot because it was already $5 an hour. And I felt like we needed to make the, I'd heard that you wanted to keep that fee in there. But it didn't make sense to make the not, the out of town one the same. So it, it was a, it was a struggle. That's what I came up with.
In addition, for additional hour instead of 250?
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
You get, you get to the first two hours if you're a nonprofit.
Right.
First two hours for $5.
Yep.
I got 250 just bothers me.
Yes. It is a crazy ridiculous amount. I am not disagreeing with you on that at all. Um, I debated hard about just pulling that out and not having that at all. But then, like I said, I had heard that you wanted to keep that in there, so I kept it in there.
Nobody else have thought? I'd say pull it out or make it $5.
Okay.
So why wouldn't you just turn around and rent it for two more hours then? If it's gonna be $5.
Right, well, it's the same thing. It's just that we're, we're mandating a two hour basically rental fee because we get groups that come in there and say they're gonna rent it for an hour, but it's a little bit more and it's a little bit less. It's a struggle. It's a struggle to really manage the hour to hour rentals.
I mean, I want it for four hours. They only want it for three, but it's gonna be another $5.
At the end of the day, it's all kind of all, all our system anyway.
Yeah.
If I'm having a meeting from seven to nine, there ain't nobody from the city to here to come to check, make sure I'm out there by nine o'clock. I'll be out there.
That's kind of correct. And so we kind of went off of what we had been observing. It's the same way with the standard two hour weekly rental rate. I mean, a lot of people, they don't put in there their cleanup or their set down, their tear down. And, and most times it's not a problem at all unless you have a group that's waiting for it or something like that. Then, then we run into some issues, but.
Well, I'd change it to $5, just cause I made that different sense. That's, that's my input. If anybody else has anything else, disagree with me.
I mean, I don't have, I mean, I don't, this is you guys' stuff, so it doesn't matter to me at all. If we wanted to just make it like it is now and have no fee there, that's fine too.
I'm not fighting over $2.50.
We need that extra $2.50. I'm not hearing any dissent for my idea, Melissa, so.
Okay.
All right. What else do you need to know? I think we all like it.
Okay, then, then we'll move forward with that. Thanks.
Did I get a motion? Most of the motion.
Do I need a motion and then amend that to $5?
Just include it in your motion.
I just did.
So moved? Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Colton. Any other discussion? You got that written down, Leslie? Roll call, please.
Councilperson Goodweiler?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna talk about the Casey's parking lot again.
And settle it. Well, maybe.
This is an open discussion, so throw it out there. What do, what do we got? We got a drawing here that includes paving. I thought we killed that six or 10 months ago. In lieu of what? I'm not, we were just gonna do the sidewalks. Last time we talked, we had to finish the sidewalks. That's the last thing we agreed upon, I thought.
We were, we directed, we directed the count, the administration last week to give us every scenario. So then we would have educated information on what the cost of each scenario would be. That, that's the way we can make a correct decision.
There's no cost involved here. Is there? This isn't, there's other scenarios. But concrete parking lot. 14 stalls, sidewalk, some grass islands, $18,800. Seal code parking area and sidewalk, $8,300.
It seemed a little low. Okay, we'll charge you more. Well, no, I mean, if we're, if we just do sidewalks, we're, it's $5,100. Are they gonna pave that for $3,000? Seal code sometimes.
I don't know how much would be seal coated and how much would be grassed. Or my, to finish sidewalk replacement with grass over the entire thing, $5,100.
I like that option. I don't think it's the city's job to supply a parking lot for a business.
Business? Oh, I guess the.
Yeah.
So.
Across the road.
There are five vehicles in there. Any other businesses there?
Seems weird to have a 14 car parking.
I'm okay with that. During Christmas past, if the Boy Scouts want to cook donuts there.
Funny, you should say that. I was, I've been.
We'll have to still pile it off or something for Christmas past.
Well, I've been brainstorming. I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna fix the sidewalks and make a green space, that's fine. But we're gonna put the, the mural there.
Correct.
And kind of make it a destination.
Destination.
We're not gonna make it a destination, then we shouldn't put the mural there. We should find another place to put the mural. A destination is a place where somebody's gonna go. So, so my thought would be, what if we made it like a little pocket park? And I'm not gonna say gave it to the nonprofit organizations, but kind of let them be in charge of whatever kind of improvements that they'd like to see done.
Farmer's Market could go in.
Farmer's Market could go there. The Boy Scouts are gonna need someplace to do their cans at some point. Once Tony's Place sells, you know, we could give them a little spot behind the mural for their little shed or whatever. You know, it's gonna create traffic in the town. I reached out to the Lions Club about their flag shat that they wanted to put out by the cemetery to see if they would be interested in having a spot out there, you know? And then if you wanted to do patios and stuff like that, those could all be Eagle projects, service projects. They could all be funded by the, by the nonprofit groups. So basically the city puts in some sidewalk plants, some grass and a sign and then they mow it once a week and they walk away, you know? And, and, you know, obviously they, you know, anything that's done there will have to be approved, you know? But it's, it's not gonna be used for building anything. It's, we've made a decision that we're not gonna use it as a parking lot. So. We had to have it some ad, so now.
Okay, I'm fine with grass. However, some dirt's gotta be removed and some good dirt's gotta be put in, cause grass will never grow.
Right on top of the, well, I'm hoping that was included in the, I'm hoping that was included in the price.
I don't know. That is a proposal with grass over the rest of the park. Well, I guarantee you, we gotta remove some of that. We gotta remove eight to 10 inches of that gravel, cause it's gonna, it's gonna look like we're already square.
And as far as making a decision on what we do with it, I mean, I guess at the, the back of my head, I, I would think that we'd kind of have to have somewhat of a direction that we'd be willing to go with the use of it before we invest money in what we're gonna leave it as a finished product. You know, but as far as making a decision on who gets to use it and all that other stuff, I mean, that's, that's not important today.
I like your idea. I like, I like.
You know. Little splash pad there.
It's not big enough. Okay. I'm on board with Colton. Just let's get the sidewalks done and seed it. I'm on board with that.
That means removing all the concrete that's in there and.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
We got a truck and someplace to put it, so.
Yeah, I think 10 to 12 inches of dirt, of gravel, crap's gotta be removed and trucked in black dirt.
We can get some dirt from that salt dirt. As it grows, get grass, we can take that dirt out of. I don't think there's that. I don't think there's that much dirt there.
Okay, um, is that, is that a consensus then? This is the final time. We're not gonna do this again. Let's get the sidewalks done and seed it, get the mural up. Call it good for a while.
Okay, so we have fifty one hundred dollars, three weeks for completion. So, this is a discussion item, correct? So why don't we have Matt come back with this next week with a schedule? Tend of schedule. The, the one thing that I would like to add is coming into the summer months. Obviously, the sooner this is done, the, the better we can utilize it, you know, as far as poker runs coming in to see the mural. At least the mural oughta be done by Hoover days.
Yeah.
I mean, that should be a must.
So, turn it into a green space. That mean we're gonna seed it down, put a straw man on it? Somebody's gonna keep it watered? Grass doesn't grow if it doesn't have water.
Getting into the heat of the summer. Yeah, we'll have to water it.
And that's all included in that price?
Yeah, we'll get water from somewhere.
Several quarter hours or something, got some keep come out, turn on a hose and watch a sprinkler go. I mean, it's, it's not rocket science. Just getting somebody to do it.
Davio, Davio will water that.
He's losing his parking spot.
He's gonna love it.
Okay. curb stops in, so people don't actually park on it for like
Maybe a raid.
Sound days or, you know.
That's gonna cost one.
You're gonna get towed if you park on there.
I think once it becomes real grass and, and it's gonna be pretty clear that it's no parking. Right?
I hope.
Turn around and drive through it.
Raise it up so that you can't drive up in there.
I kinda like that idea. Concrete cost just went up though. That's a lot more work. But then we wouldn't have to take out so much dirt, because we could, you're already six inches ahead. Curb, what do you think? Do a curb?
You're gonna make this.
Aren't we doing?
We're not coming back with this.
You're gonna make this comeback.
We can't agree to it until we find out how much it costs.
But curb stops, not bad, but if you build a curb.
Oh, curb stop. I'm thinking of building the curb. Formed concrete. Raise it, raise it up, six inches. We're doing it up in coming part.
Actually, it might not be that bad. All you gotta do is make your sidewalk six inches thick. You just put a, you just put a two by six right on top of the.
We do?
Heard about that.
We do? That's how they did that. Okay, oh, I'm all for the curb then. Raised, raised grass area.
I'm for a sign.
Sign that says what?
Violator, you park on it, you're towed. Violator will be towed.
You can jump a curb too.
Why do we make this so difficult? No, it's not. Someone, some trucker's gonna drive through there trying to turn around like he already has a couple times, he got stopped. Without that curb.
We have cameras in town.
Not there, we don't have cameras there. Mural's going way to the north end of it.
Doesn't have to.
That would be where I would suggest there's some changes, because you wouldn't want the Boy Scouts to put a shed in front of the mural. You might wanna cheat that up a little bit and put the shed back behind the mural. Right.
They'll move, they'll move when the flood.
That's what I mean, can be washed away by the flood.
Jesus.
Alright, so we're on board with the sidewalk idea for sure. I'm still saying it should be a raised curb. Raised grass bed, six inches up, to prevent someone from driving on it. Move the mural forward, twelve feet to the south. Some sort of functional space behind it, if, if that ever gets called for, for storage. You can't, it'd have to be, it's temporary storage, because we can't build a building there. Something on skids. Okay.
We might not be able to put a sign there.
Is the sign sitting on the ground or is it raised?
No, violation.
Do you do that in, where you put the mural?
In post.
Okay, well. You put the sign up.
Well, but who, who says we can put the mural there? I mean, if the water comes up and hits the mural.
Post aren't even allowed in floodways.
That's gonna be some high water if it gets to the base of the.
Hey, I talked to people about a bridge. You'd be surprised what that come up.
Okay, have we got a consensus then? Everybody agree on that consensus?
I know we agreed on sidewalks.
So Mike, did Mike, here's my suggestion sidewalk, with a raised curb, grass. What else do you wanna know?
Real mural.
You go with a sidewalk and grass.
I'm okay with the sidewalk and the grass.
No curb.
No curb.
Guess we could put baller, or uh, temporary manmade.
We can wait to see if it's even a problem first before we.
I guarantee it, it becomes a problem. You're gonna reseed.
Soon as someone drives through it, we're adding a curb.
With ballards.
I've got those ones that really do damage.
Somebody ran over our sign, l- lynch's. They caught it on camera, it looked like they did. So we, we fixed it. They're, they're gonna be limping away. They hit that thing next time.
It's just property. It's just a car.
Yeah.
Okay, so now I'm hearing no curb. Grass, no curb.
Why did we go with no curb? I'm, did I miss that? Because I'm not agreeing on anything that, I don't know how much it costs.
Well, the no curb is fifty three hundred bucks.
That's why I'm not agreeing on a curb.
So are these parking stalls still gonna go in the front?
Yep. Yeah.
So that part, that's not, is that part of this into?
We'll paint it. We'll probably paint.
Yeah, that should already be there.
Unless it's private property, but no, we'll paint the, we'll probably strike those three, three, three new stalls.
So see, that's where it all gets more, that's what, where it's all gonna get more difficult, because you put them parking spots there and then you're gonna have to make them ADA and you're gonna have to put one of them little ramps and you're gonna have, it's gonna have to cross where it needs to go.
Is that what you're getting at?
Yeah.
No curb.
I mean, if, if worse comes to worse, you put the parking blocks in there, but if you raise a curb, you've just opened a whole new can.
The curb's on the backside.
Well, that would be, that'd almost be dumb, Jerry, to put the curb on the back and have your sidewalk.
You could park on the sidewalk then.
You know, like, when, when the Mexican restaurant was open, there wasn't a curb there and that was real, could be a real pain in the butt to get in and out of that place.
Well, it's not gonna be any parking.
I see, I understand what Colton's saying, but the way I was looking at it was putting the curb on the backside of the sidewalk, so they have something that would hold the grass in. Not on the front side. Put the curb between the sidewalk and the grass, so that they wouldn't drive.
That's not gonna stop people from just pulling up to the curb and then, so then now the parking on the sidewalk.
Well, they would if you designated the sidewalk, but.
Well, then if we're gonna do that, why don't we just do that to begin with and not do the sidewalk, not do the curb?
What if you put some benches in the middle? Make it all grass and maybe have a little square, little piece for people to sit.
That can come later, Redman. We'll let a group do that. That can come later.
Well then, my thought is that way they won't, they will know it's not parking.
Well, if it's seeded in grass, you better know it's not our part.
Yeah, you would think they would, if there's something there in the middle. If it's just grass, then they might be tempted to park on it.
Man, you got an opinion?
Oh, I didn't know.
About which one to do?
Not gonna be fun? Okay.
No, I haven't been on. I, I'm, I'm on vacation, if you wanna call it that.
So he's calling in. Alright, so we pretty much decided we just wanna do the sidewalk in grass. The discussion. Do we put a curb to keep the grass in and to keep drivers out? Where does the curb go?
I mean, we could add that if you, if that's something you wanna have.
Let me see.
Five hundred bucks, eight hundred bucks?
It would add probably a, probably a week to it. Putting that curb in. And about we'll say about fifteen hundred bucks. To do a curb on three sides. Or not three sides, the two sides that would be behind the sidewalk.
Is that just material, Matt?
Yeah, I mean, that's not labor. I mean, if you figured it'd take us a couple days to get it dug out, formed up. And then to pour it, you're probably talking three days. Then you gotta strip it and saw it, so probably close to, it'd be, it'd probably add a week doing that.
Would you strip some of that crappy gravel out of there to put in black dirt?
Yeah, I think that would be what we would probably do is strip out the go in and cut back to where the sidewalk would be. Take the concrete out that we wouldn't need, take out the rock. If we were just putting sidewalks in and dirt, I wouldn't raise the sidewalks up. I'd just leave them where they were and then go uh, core out the metal and put dirt back in the back.
Way I see it.
Okay, curb or no curb? Mostly I select the curb idea.
Are we gonna put parking spaces there on Main Street?
Yeah, yeah, there'll be three, three new parking spaces.
Why?
Because it's natural, it's a natural fit for them.
There are any businesses there.
There will be again someday.
It, it wouldn't be actually like adding them. It'd just be what's already there. Could be used as parking, I think was the idea. It's not like going tearing out old stuff and pouring new parking stalls in or nothing.
I don't think it's a bad idea. If you're gonna put the mural there and the idea is to get people to come to the mural, you're gonna wanna have some parking there for them so they can park.
Park it hosers.
You guys aren't, okay, so uh.
Coming back.
What's coming back? No, we're not doing, we're deciding right now. If you guys aren't gonna speak up against it, I'm throwing in a curb.
I already did.
I'd at least like to see a curb, um, in front of those parking spots, so the cars don't drift up onto the sidewalk. To the, to the west or I don't care.
Okay.
You mean act, front of the sidewalk? Because if we put it in front of the sidewalk, then it does change the grade. Um, and would probably require us to take the stuff out in front of it and pour that back.
So that's makes it a raised sidewalk. If we put a curb where the national. That's not what we want though, is it?
I mean, if you were doing the whole area, then yeah, but you're not doing. You'd almost have to do the stuff to the east of there or change, have a transition somewhere in there. Because it comes across and then drops down when it gets like, uh, in front of the old Main Street Suites building. It dri, it starts to drop down and then the sidewalk levels off. So you could, but you'd have to transition it probably farther back to the east.
Somebody could just put curb stops in front of those four spots.
Yeah, you could do that. Yeah, that actually needs new ones over there too. We'd probably put concrete ones in front of all of it. I mean, we haven't messed with it since it's nothing.
Just makes it real fun to plow snow.
Yep.
No curb, curb. Throw it out there, take a vote. Let's move on.
You don't think that if we actually put barricades along here until we got grass started between the sidewalk and the street? That people are gonna actually drive through there?
Well, not with barricades.
Once you get grass grown.
They're gonna be parking.
I'm not sure grass will ever get established there, between the sidewalk and the street anyway. That strip of grass will probably never grow.
Make no parking along there?
Okay, that can be figured out later. Give me a show of hands who wants a curb, a raised bed of grass. I'm one. I could vote on this. What do you think, Jody?
Now it's three to three, because if you can vote, it's three to three.
That's a tie. My language is going downhill at these meetings.
I could be the tiebreaker. I'd say no curb.
Sounds great.
Okay, well, just, alright, I'll reset my vote and go with no curb.
Why we think we are just gonna park on grass, because.
And if, but if they do, a curb's not gonna stop them. You can hop a curb.
You can, but it's not so, it's not, it's not likely. I'm gonna drive over a curb to go park.
I think we just decided though, we're going no curb. Okay? We just beat this to death.
Days I would.
So, a grass area is gonna get Oh, it will. I guarantee it will.
No, because I'll bet there's something happening there.
Okay, I think we just decided there'll be no curb. Level sidewalks. No up, no rise in the sidewalk, you know what I mean, Matt? No. No.
Yep, it's basically keeping the same grade as what's already there. And filling in with dirt to get grass on it.
Correct.
Okay.
That's our direction. That's what we just decided.
At least post no parking on the
Awesome hosers.
This side?
Yeah, we could, we could put something there.
You know who's gonna be parking there?
Right, the whole day.
Their prerogative that they can park there.
Oh, you mean right now?
Two vehicles there. Whatever you want there. I'm, I'm not gonna fight that. I, I guess the way I look at it is we have a downtown that half the time we don't have enough parking and here we are taking parking away when somebody could be parking there. It just doesn't make sense to me. During an event, we really wanna have parking. We can discuss that later too. That doesn't have to be decided tonight. That's a whole nother battle. Like that's a busy, busy street.
Okay, I think we got a direction for you, Matt.
I'm gonna put this to rest.
Alright.
We're gonna move on. Item eight is a lift.
Need anything else from me? Otherwise, I'm gonna go make my wife suffer.
Well, we got this alley, but you don't need to be here for that. Okay, um, item eight, lift and or limit mask requirements at city facilities. We actually lift, we. It's an option. People wanna wear a mask, that's fine. If they don't, they don't.
So.
Yeah, the pandemic's over.
One is, we don't have any masks on now, so we don't, we don't have, we don't have to be coming to council meetings with masks. I'm, I'm assuming that's where our position is.
CDC says we don't have to since we're all vaccinated.
And, um. We're wearing, requiring wearing masks coming into council chambers. I think that's still up, but. We have kind of taken the sign down for the front office. We're all vaccinated.
Can we make a sign that says if you're vaccinated or you're unvaccinated to wear a mask? Is that discriminating?
I think that's the actual direction of the CDC saying if you're not vaccinated.
So you just, if you wanna wear a mask, wear a mask and if you don't, don't. If you get COVID, don't blame us. That's my opinion anymore. You know what? You had ample opportunity to get vaccinated. I mean, cause you're not gonna run around checking vaccine cards anyway. So it's all just on our system. And is, you can't control other people's. Actions. Only control your own. So if you're concerned about it, you wear a mask. You're not concerned about it, don't wear a mask.
So what's that make our official policy? Does that lift the mask requirement?
I think it would.
We're looking for an official policy.
I mean, who talks to the most people in the public? Wesley?
Leslie.
Do you care if they come in or don't come in?
If she's uncomfortable with it, then she can wear a mask.
You might ask them to leave. I think that's an endorsement to lift the mask. That be the headline in the paper tomorrow? That doesn't have to be the headline, does it?
Do we want to go back to our original pre. Pre spacing or whatever distancing, social distancing seating at council?
Guess so.
That's adding three more chairs.
Kinda like this arrangement.
I guess the one thing I wanted to bring up was the whole Zoom meeting thing. Now that we've established that technology, that doesn't seem to add any.
Doesn't hurt.
Doesn't hurt anything and it just makes it more accessible to people. I mean, I think to an extent for people like Matt and our staff, it actually helps them because they can. They can click on, they can sit at their house, they can go ask the questions that we need to answer them and then click out. We're not paying them travel time. We're, you know, we're not taking them away from their family as long. It's here, it's free. Why, why not just keep using the Zoom?
I agree.
It gives another option for people. Public as well. If somebody doesn't wanna come down here, whether it's pandemic or. Physical limitations.
Maybe it'll make it easy. Maybe the, maybe some like, like the. Community development group and then maybe we'll hear more from them if it's not quite an inconvenience for them to come down here or, you know, maybe. One of our, maybe one of our county supervisors will come down once every four or five years so they can zoom in. He shouldn't walk at the door without knowing who he is.
I knew who he was. I just had a brain aneurysm. I don't know what.
I, I was the same way. I knew who he was. I just didn't remember.
I've been in a hundred meetings with.
Okay. Next, the mask requirement. Normal spacing next month maybe? Alright, next item, um, Main Street Alley. Consider closing the Main Street entrance access to the alley between fourth and fifth. This is the alley across from, uh, Kevin Stulman's shop. I guess, Jody, this is kinda. Because.
Well, first of all. They do spend a lot of time after rains, heavy rains. Having, drive a tractor up there and put the gravel, take it off from Main Street. But. Coming down off of that, onto Main Street, that's a safety, that's a safety thing right there. Because you gotta stop to clear up time. You can't stop on that ramp. Once you get on that ramp, you're going.
I did it just to see. I won't do it a second.
You can't see.
No, it didn't. It didn't, but it was.
It didn't?
Nope. But I was sliding sideways when I.
Okay, so if this is closed.
Oh, I know, I'm just, I, I understand that. Well, you can if you don't let them drive all that way.
So if we close it, would we put a concrete barricade up, up a few yards? So the gravel's still gonna be there.
Why? Why not dig it out?
We dig it out and seed it? Okay.
Get it up with grass.
Right.
Where, where's the gra, the gravel's not coming just from that very end. The gravel's coming from all the way down the alley.
You can see where it's running out.
So like a, a hundred feet of grass would prevent it from getting, hitting the street, I imagine.
Yeah.
Who's gonna mow it? Guy next door isn't gonna mow it.
Why not?
He can't own his own yard.
Well, that's.
When you, when you turn over alleys, who takes over that little bit?
Do we plant?
Put some crown vets there and see if it takes hold. A, a, a plant that will grow.
And it doesn't need mowed.
Right.
You don't want something that's invasive either, though.
Well, that is.
Once it takes hold. I'm sure the neighbors would not want that in their yard. But it only gets like.
Yeah, it gets six, eight inches tall, something like that.
Well, if the neighbor mows your yard, it wouldn't get in. Okay, I'm, I'm for it. I really am. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it.
I'm looking to see what the procedure is for permanently closing part of the street. I think we might get ordinance double check. I'll go red.
Do we have a consensus then to close it or?
Sorry, I thought I jumped the gun.
I'm hearing yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll start the.
I'm, I'm not gonna vacate it and get rid of it.
But you, to close it, there's a procedure. You're permanently, you're permanently closing one side. So there is a procedure. I just gotta look it up. I hope we were wrong, top my head.
I'm very surprised that nobody from that alley is here to discuss this. Were they notified that we were gonna have this discussion tonight?
We didn't send out letters.
We sent out a letter?
No, we didn't.
So this isn't over.
They probably don't know.
Don't do any legal work. It's gonna cost us any money.
You can look up your.
I can start the process.
Yeah, would this require a public hearing?
I think it may actually. I'll just dou, I'll double check.
I mean, you're, you say you're dealing with them.
I think vacating, vacating alleys is just a three voter.
Yeah, but we're not gonna vacate this one. There's a different procedure for closing. Cause we're not gonna, we're not gonna relinquish title if my interpretation is correct.
Nope, that's correct.
This is a safety issue.
So we're not closing anybody's access office.
And nobody uses it anyway.
So in that case, then we, we end up maintaining whatever in there that's crass, gets in there that city has to pay, has to take care of. That's why we need to plant something that never needs maintenance.
I mean, right now we're paying them to scoop up rock.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, you guys are talking about having the neighbors mow it.
That won't be fun to mow.
Well, you can drive down to the end of the. Alley there and drive around barricade. We, we would put a real barricade in, right? We'd have, we'd have like a hundred yards up, a hundred feet up there.
As far up as we can. Maybe give that first driveway the opportunity to have them back out.
Okay, um. City administrator report.
Just on the last item, so we'll, whatever the process is, we'll make sure that the, maybe with the load is right. So whenever this comes up with some official act, it'll be, it'll be there. Alright. Just real quickly on the wastewater, uh, stuff, we have, uh, started the, uh, process on our, um. Planning and zoning, uh, planning and design, um, SRF. Drawdowns. We, uh, had a conversation with ECIA. They're going to, uh, do a assessment which is needed as a part of the CDBG grant. Um, that's gonna be around two thousand dollars for them to do that assessment. So I wanted to make sure that, um, West Branch Village. Uh, still wants to pursue that connection and if so, they're understanding that any. Uh, costs associated with investigating the grant is the cost that, uh, they'd be, be willing to share. So. We're waiting to make sure that is okay before, uh, ECI starts working.
I'd like to go so far as to. Problems at home, whatever. Um, they're gonna do some, they're, they're petitioning, developing and adding. It's like fifty homesite, something like that, isn't it? I, I'm not gonna say that we forced them to add, to add on to, to get on to the city, but they have a system now that. Can barely take care of what they got and causes problems with the, the residents of the city with the smell and stuff like that. Now, if they're gonna add fifty more homesites, which is almost a thirty percent increase. It's gonna get worse.
I think that's a reasonable, I'm doing the same thing for, they tried to add on. They have water wells and stuff. They're gonna get off those.
So. Would you look and was I doing something wrong?
No, no, I was just making sure, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that.
So it's, so it's a discussion that we probably need to have at some point was, what is our standard gonna be? Are we gonna make them? Just to get on to the city stuff or are we gonna make them improve their system? But some, one of the two things needs to happen. You don't just get to add fifty. Fifty residents onto a system that's already failing.
Yep.
They're already on our wire. Yeah.
Um, so Matt, uh, just some green view connection, um, REC started work. Think they might be completed at work. If not, they should be completed this week, if they're not already. Everything else seems to be moving forward. Uh, we are looking at, um, getting siren move soon. Matt's got a couple of contractors he's looking at, uh, with that. Park side, met with the, uh, developer there. Uh, he's been showing interest in some type of TIF. Particularly because of the extra stormwater issues that have been arise and he's looking to maybe get some relief there, but we talked about. Stormwater issues, but also the commercial development, um, the hotel, proposed hotel, which is still being proposed and part of his plans. Might be looking at wanting to get some kind of TIF or some kind of, uh, agreement with that. And then we also talked about the potential, uh, turn lane, which is still out there. So those things, um, all are, are on, in his, on his mind, on a table. Uh, providing him a couple of, uh, examples of previous agreements, uh, that we've had with Casey's and with. With, with the metals, particularly with the, the sewer, the sewer that we did there. So, so he can have some apples to apples and, and comparisons. Um, we talked about food pantry. We, everybody's seen the new truck. And then it's just a couple of department updates in there too.
I have one thing on the weekly update. Very first thing is daily check of streets. This is done for continually spots, potholes, downlands, garbey. Water main break, blah, blah, blah. Apparently they're not going down Cedar Johnson Road. Cause those are no longer potholes. They're craters. People are almost driving in the ditch to go around it.
Are we waiting for the asphalt people to show up and chip and seal that or?
Well, that could be. You got three weddings this weekend. It's gonna have probably. Five hundred people driving out there.
Should we ask them to some coal patch for that?
I mean, they're, they're, it's a continuous pothole from one end to the other.
I don't like having weddings going on, we got a world like that. Hey.
Yep.
Um, on, as, on the back of Redman's report is these planters that Nick Schuman got through a grant. We'll see them downtown. They're quite a bit heavier than what we've had before, so he's gonna get new brackets to hang them up on the light poles. The existing brackets I thought were too flimsy, so I didn't wanna hang seventy pound bags of baskets up there. Well, the flowers are planted in them and they're gonna be really nice when they go. Nick Schuman put that all together, uh, Saturday, last Saturday. Okay. Kevin? You email it to him?
I mailed it to you. All of you can see again.
Got it.
Yeah. Yeah, so, that's all I have.
We don't need to approve those, do we? No. So the green view connection's gonna take the property owners next door to sign off on. Construction easement and right away, so.
Keep your tree?
It'll happen. My tree's good.
You had a ditch in your front yard or?
No ditch, no ditch. I'm gonna let them grade as far back as they want in my yard to make it smooth. Not losing my tree. Not getting a sapling. I, I called Dave the next day and apologized anyway. Anyway, um, staff. Anybody on? Staff wanna speak up? Hearing none. Leslie, sorry.
Um, I just wanted to let everyone on an update on the recalcification. Um, I did get an email back from, um, them on. In the April, I just, before I go on vacation. So we've got a draft copy of it. We're in the process of reviewing it by staff. Anybody who has some free time would like to help go through, read some through, through four hundred and ninety-four pages, feel free to let me know. Um, otherwise hopefully, um, we'll have it reviewed by June first and then you should see it hoping by the first meeting in June, cause we do have to have a public hearing. It's a three reading thing, so. You'll need to have some time to look at it yourselves before you approve it. So.
Cliff notes.
We're close.
I need cliff notes.
Cliff notes would be great. Cliff Notes would be great. I've got it downloaded, but I haven't looked at it.
I do have a copy if anyone's interested in looking at it, so please let me know.
Okay, that gets to us. I have two things. Talked to the guys this morning. They're gonna put a priority on the cemetery to make it look better this week, this week and next. So it'll get better. It's time for Redmond's annual review. I'd like to do that next Monday, a week from tonight, if it's possible. Say five.
I can do any night but Monday.
You can't do Tuesday.
Tuesday's on, I, Tuesday, I could do Wednesday. I'll be gone Thursday, Friday, so. Second Wednesday would be important.
You can't do Wednesday?
Nope, I'm gone Wednesday on.
Forever. What time do you? Like 3:30, 4:30? For anybody?
I'm leaving.
I mean, Monday.
Monday? Probably not. I'd, I don't, I don't know, I don't know what my schedule is.
I can't do Monday. Not next Monday.
Okay, if we do Tuesday, then Kevin can't be here. Trying to decide if you need to be here. Kinda wanted you here just to be ears. You're gone for the whole, a week or so, or?
I won't be back till Saturday or Sunday.
That puts us into the next council meeting, Monday.
No, that's.
Is that right?
No.
We got another Monday, don't we? The 31st.
Yeah, Memorial Day weekend.
We're not beating on the 31st. That's Memorial Day, right?
Yeah.
Not doing it.
No, not either.
What's going on Thursday?
I'll do, you won't want me here.
Tom's gone.
This Thursday?
Yeah.
No, a week from Wednesday.
Well, this Thursday.
This Thursday, or I need to do it on Friday, but.
This Thursday, there's a hearing in this room about a vicious dog.
Yes.
At five? Five o'clock? We could meet at six or 6:30 this coming Thursday.
Good for me. I'm gonna be here.
Okay, we're getting closer. Getting closer. I can't. It's coming Thursday. Four days from now. I said I can't.
Oh, I thought you said I can't.
So the dog hearing's at five. Could take an hour. It's going to. So I'm saying 6:30 Thursday. What do you got?
I can skip it.
Yeah, please do. I hate scheduling. This is real. Alright, I think we're on for Thursday at 6:30, this coming Thursday at 6:30. That'll be Redmond's review. Annual review. That's all we need to know. I'll try to send out a text reminder during the day Thursday to remind everybody. That's all I have. Anybody, you go ahead. Nick?
I have just a quick question. I think you, I don't know if you did it last summer or not. I know since we changed chiefs, we used to do the ice cream tickets for the bike helmets.
Haven't talked about it yet.
Did we wanna do that again? I know that was kinda something that came through.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Well, chief.
I'll talk to Cory.
Cory, if we wanted to do that again? I don't know if we did it last summer or not with everything going on.
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't know. I didn't recall if we did it last summer or not with everything going on. I don't remember.
Six foot.
Could we put it in our budget?
It's like $50.
Still gotta be in there.
Okay.
Colton, we have community policing money that we budget every year.
That's right.
Yes.
Okay, we'd like you to do that again, Cory and Kathy. And the rest of you. Is that possible?
I'll get with Stephen. We'll make it happen.
Beautiful. Thank you.
That was it. So I had anything else? It's about that time then.
Yeah, there's a whole gang of them down here. Any motion to adjourn then? Second? Is that in Utah?
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye. Meeting adjourned.